Call the city of Forest Park, council meeting number thirteen forty-two, September sixteenth, twenty nineteen. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
... The flag of the United States of America and the Republic of America stands. One nation, united in the judicial justice for all.
Clerk call to roll, please.
Burns. Collins.
Here.
Herbie.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Ness.
Here.
Motion, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I would move to excuse Councilmember Burns.
Second.
Moving second to excuse Councilmember Burns. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of excusing Councilwoman Burns, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Pose. Councilwoman Burns is excused. Next item, I need a motion also to excuse the law director.
I would move to excuse the law director.
Second.
Moving second, there will be excuse Mr. Wykoff, law director. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to excuse the law director, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Pose. Mr. Wykoff is excused. Next item, item number two is minutes. You will have received minutes in your packets. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, we go to item number three. Presentations. The first of these, or two of these, will be the August Business of the Month and the September Business of the Month, Mr. Paul Brown.
Mayor members of council, thank you very much. As you know, we have two Business of the Month award presentations this evening due to our summer recess, and we decided to take advantage of this opportunity to highlight a couple of our businesses dedicated to improving the health of our residents. All of us can agree on the importance of good dental health and its impact on one's overall well-being. Unfortunately, here in Forest Park, our residents can find expert dental care just around the corner. Dr. John Harmeyer and his team at Kemper Meadow Family Dentistry provide quality dentistry services to help our residents achieve healthy, beautiful teeth. Kemper Meadow Family Dentistry provides you with the highest quality dental care in a friendly, comfortable, and professional environment. At their practice, they take a unique approach to the science of dentistry, helping you and your children achieve a beautiful smile with ease. Their experience combined with today's technology allows all of their procedures to be completed nearly pain-free and easier than ever before, no matter what brings you into their office. Their doctors believe that informed patients are better prepared to make decisions regarding their dental health, and that's why they've included an extensive section on their website covering the full array of topics associated with enhancing the health and appearance of your teeth. Indeed, Kemper Meadow Family Dentistry is a key member of our healthcare community, and it's our pleasure to honor this growing dental practice with our August Business of the Month. I should say, our council clerk was one of the people who nominated this fine company for our Business of the Month award for this. I assume Sally's a good patient over there, so...
I'm a new patient.
New patient, huh? So, but we're very happy to have them in the community. I don't believe anybody was here tonight from Kemper Meadow Family Dentistry, so I will make sure that the doctor and his team receive this award. Our next award winner offers important services designed to help our residents achieve a healthier lifestyle. The Little Clinic recently started a program in coordination with Kroger and Mercy Health to do exactly that. Dietary and nutrition information can sometimes be overwhelming and confusing. The Little Clinic now has a professional nutrition consultant at our local store to help. A graduate of Bluffton University, Rebecca Starnes is a nutrition technician who works at the Forest Park Kroger. Residents can find her near the produce and floral departments or by stopping at the customer service desk to set up a meeting. Rebecca is ready, willing, and able to answer any questions you might have with regards to healthy food choices throughout the store. She can even help you budget and shop to achieve the goals of your own personalized nutrition prescription. To help guarantee a complete and effective approach to nutrition for you and your family, Rebecca works closely with Dr. Stephen Wilson and his team at Mercy Health Forest Park. Indeed, it was Dr. Wilson who brought this unique collaboration between the Little Clinic, Kroger, and his office to our attention. This is a unique and valuable program for those who live and work in our community. The Economic Development Commission is happy to recognize this important health initiative, and accepting the award tonight is Rebecca Starnes from the Little Clinic Nutrition Program at Kroger. Rebecca.
Congratulations, and thank you for being at Forest Park. The city of Forest Park Business of the Month, the Little Clinic Nutrition Program, Forest Park Kroger, in recognition of the company's contribution to the growth and development of the city of Forest Park. Thank you for being a part of the Forest Park family. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Have a word, please.
This is a very exciting new program, and I'm really honored to be a part of it. There's a lot of good stuff to come, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda will be Industrial Beautification Awards.
These are the 2019 Industrial Winners. I'm only going to call the names of the ones that they told me would be here today. Care Corps at the Meadows at seventeen six, one-one-seven-six-oh Pelston. Wendy's at Chase Plaza. Forest Chapel, United Methodist Church at six-eighty West Sharon. That was it for the people that they said would be here. Is there anybody else here that got an award that I didn't call your name? Yes, Kemper Road Christian Church. I don't think we... Congratulations to all, and a big thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Quinn Chapel?
Yep.
Is there anybody else that... I would like to say thanks to all of you, and thanks for keeping Forest Park beautiful.
I would just like to echo that sentiment. We are lucky to have businesses in Forest Park of all kinds who make special efforts to help to make Forest Park look good, and I want to personally thank you all for doing such. It's really great of you, and I'd say keep up the good work. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is proclamation. There's someone here from the Cancer Society for Cancer Awareness Month. Seeing no one, we have a proclamation for them, and we will, the clerk of council will make sure that they get that proclamation. And I'm sure that we all understand and know why it's so important to do those early checkups and those preventative things. Can make all the difference in the world, right, Doc? Absolutely. So, again, they will, the clerk will make sure that they get their proclamation. The next item on the agenda is item number four, communications from the public. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcriptions, and comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the council?
Good evening. I'm Sheila Cotto, a forty-seven-year resident of Forest Park, and I would actually like to... I'm so excited that Rebecca is going to be available, and Rebecca Starnes will be the nutrition technician at Kroger's, and is going to offer our residents quite a bit there of any kind of needs they have. Do you want to take a couple of minutes and speak?
Hi, as introduced several times, I am Rebecca. I'm the nutrition technician over at the Forest Park Kroger. We have been there since early June now and working hand-in-hand with Dr. Wilson in a pilot program for a nutrition prescription program, and I just want to go ahead and say this would not have happened without him, so he deserves just as much recognition as me. He won't admit it, but he does. So, while we are working hand-in-hand with Mercy Health, we are not only a service for Mercy patients, we are a service to the entire Forest Park community. If people want to come in, have basic nutrition questions they'd like to ask, tips and tricks to live healthier lifestyles, to make better-for-you options, I'm your girl. I will preface with, I am not a dietitian, but if you are needing more personalized nutrition aspects, we have resources to get you the help and to get you the dietitian referrals that you need. Kroger has a lot of great services that they're offering, so, thank you again.
Mayor, I'll leave the information for you as well.
Thank you. Okay. Normally at this time, this is the time when we would, when our office, when our audience members are perfectly welcome to stay, but if you need to leave, we would understand that completely. Next item on the agenda is item number five, report of standing committees. First of these would be public improvements and facilities. Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report at this time. However, I did attend the Sickle Cell Alliance Walk in August, and it was great to see the community come out and support such a great cause, and so it was a good turnout. And that completes my report.
Questions for Councilwoman Moore? Hearing none. Councilwoman Moore, I have no items specifically for you on the agenda. Do you have any to add?
No.
Next report is Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Ness.
No, I do not have a report at this... I'm sorry, can you hear me? Okay, there it is. Don't have a report at this time. The only thing that I would like to say is about a year ago, I had met with, in one of our meetings with Public Safety, with the officers and whatnot, and we talked about community engagement. We talked about kind of old-fashioned neighborhoods, so to speak, particularly the now Chief Arns. We had a great conversation about that. That led to a few more meetings in terms of trying to organize some pockets of neighborhoods so that they could, so that we could facilitate some opportunities for them to get together, be that a cookout or a barbecue or something like that, or even a block party in that space. I'm happy to say that one of our citizens, our residents is Kathy Gray, which attended that meeting and participated, has really gone full force with that. And so now we are having a block party in my section, on Holderness, each section, which will be Saturday, the twenty-eighth. Anyone from the community is welcome. It's kind of like Popeyes, you do have to bring your own bread, but we have all the bun, or I'm sorry, all the meats and hot dogs and hamburgers and whatnot, freezies for the kids, and we'll be doing that Saturday, the twenty-eighth, from one o'clock to four p.m. to try and institute some more getting-to-know thy neighbor fellowship type of community.
Okay. Any questions for Councilwoman Ness? Hearing none. Councilwoman Ness, I have no items on the agenda for you on the public safety. Do you have any to add?
I do not.
Next report is Ways and Means, Councilwoman Herbie.
No report from Ways and Means, but I would like to remind residents that Wittenwood's High School's homecoming parade and game are this coming Friday. The parade starts at five-thirty at the Intermediate School on Waycross, travels down Waycross and up Central Avenue to the school, and the game starts at seven o'clock.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Councilwoman, ever have one item on the agenda for the work session? That's contractual agreements. Do you have any to add?
No, sir.
Next committee report, Mr. Burns, Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report this evening, but if there are any questions, I'll be glad to add.
Questions for Mr. Burns? Hearing none. Mr. Burns, I have no item for you. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not.
Next committee report is Law Committee, Councilwoman Collins.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report from the Law Committee at this time.
Any questions for Councilwoman Collins? Hearing none. Councilwoman Collins, there are no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
Yes. Yesterday, I attended Inspirational Baptist Church, IBC, and they were celebrating their sixty-fifth anniversary, and a good time was had by all.
Thank you. Questions for Councilwoman Collins? No items on the agenda for law. Do you have any to add? Next committee report is Human Resources, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report for Human Resource tonight, but I would like to say that I did participate in shredding, and when I started collecting stuff, I think I saved it all. A year's worth of paper to be shredded. I really appreciate that. With that, that would conclude my report.
Questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none. Councilwoman Holt, I have one item on the agenda for you for the work session on the twenty-third, that's membership requirements on committees, boards of commissions. Do you have anything to add?
No, I do not. Thanks.
Next report is Intergovernmental Relations and Communications. That is my committee. I have no report. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there are any. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item number six, the mayor's report. Just a couple of things to report that has been mentioned on Saturday in cooperation with the Alpha Phi Alpha Phi Sorority, the city. We did the annual, what has become the annual paper shredding tire collection. This year, we, the tonnage was, we had two trucks, and the tonnage was over, was six-plus-thousand pounds of paper that was shredded. As far as tires, this year, we collected one-hundred-and-eighty-two tires total, which exceeds, this is the greatest number of tires we've collected in any year thus far. I want to thank all of those, I want to thank the sororities for sponsoring it, and all of the people who participated by bringing their papers and their tires over. And as Councilwoman Holt said, it's a good opportunity to get rid of that paper in a meaningful way, if you have it. At this point, it looks like we'll be doing it again next year, so if you want to start now saving up your paper and your old tires, good time to do that. I'd also just like to mention, in reference to the environmental awareness program, for our citizens out there, please go to your websites, and you will find information that can be and is very valuable. The large appliance pickup is still ongoing. People often will ask, what do I do with old paint? Rumpke does not take a lot of things, but there is information on the website that will tell you where you can take a lot of the stuff that, not only to get it out of your house, but because some of it can be fire hazards, and you don't want it sitting around. So, again, thank all those people and that committee for doing this, and again, Wright, as usual, did an outstanding job, in spite of the fact that he was not supposed to be lifting, but unfortunately, or fortunately, we're glad to have the tires, but a lot of the people who brought the tires over were not themselves able to lift the tires out of their cars and put them into the dumpster. So, Wright and I kind of kicked in and helped a little bit. I'm probably going to be sending some medical bills over to the city in terms of my back strays and my neck hurting and all of the other stuff that went with it. That would conclude my report, except I would mention, too, in terms of the homecoming football game, right now, Wittenwood stands at three and oh. They've not lost yet. This game is their homecoming, which is very early this year, and the, there are four games in a row that are not only state powers, but they almost always rank nationally. This homecoming game, their opponents will be Archbishop Moller. So, I can tell you, because of a number of things, not just who they're playing, but for the public out there, I'm sure you know by now, there's a lot of construction going on over there, so the parking, again, will be at a premium, even though they are using some off-site lots, including some of ours. They are also, there's a shuttle bus that are taking people to the game from the park. But word for the wise, try to get there early, if you're going to get there. That will conclude my report. I will answer any questions, if there are any. Next report would be the City Manager's Report, Mr. Jones.
Well, I do have a couple of announcements, and following up on, I'll just start out with the environmental, following up on that a little bit. The city recently went through a reevaluation of our bills, our city bills, the traffic lights, the buildings, and so forth, and we actually kind of hit on basically two things. First of all, we were able to renegotiate a contract and enter into an agreement that would, is going to save the city in excess of ten thousand dollars a year as part of our energy aggregation program, even though we're not in it yet, this is part of the start. And also, we were able to, from an environmental standpoint, able to get one-hundred percent renewable energy. So, the city, in terms of its environmental footprint and its environmental stance, is walking the walk in terms of, you know, not only are we a tree city, we're also a very environmentally friendly city. So, one-hundred percent environmental for the city, as well as saving over ten thousand dollars a year, and that will begin in December. So, that was our Public Works Department, and also Wright as well, we were able to negotiate those deals. Also, the Sickle Cell Anemia Walk run was a tremendous success, and the city had a very good presence there. Please fire the, Matt from our finance department actually had the fastest time, even though there weren't really any winners, he did get a nice medal, but everyone was a winner, and everybody had a great time. So, we expect to do a much better job, not better job, a bigger job next year. We expect to expand it and really hopefully make this a regional event, and it's a great cause. We also attended the Forest Park, Forest Chapel, the Methodist Church, and Reverend Kabumba just left, but they had a community day last, I think it was the eighth, and they blessed our fire truck. So, that was a nice event. They had a nice dinner, or a nice lunch, and had multiple mini-faits there, and it was really a nice event, so I want to thank them for hosting that event for us. September sixth, the city hosted a regional ethics training. We're very conscious and very attuned to ethics in our community, and we want to make sure that all of our employees are adequately trained and show our support for that. So, we hosted a regional one from the Ethics Commission. I don't know how many people were there, but just about everybody from the city, if they weren't on a shift, they were there. And we expect everyone in our city to complete ethics training, either through taking a class or through doing it online, to show our commitment to good, honest, and transparent government. So, we'll be training, we're making sure that all of our employees are trained, and most of them were there, quite frankly, as well as several folks from other agencies. So, it was a very nice event. Anybody that was there, we had a couple of council members there, and it was a lot of fun, I think. The lady that runs it makes it an enjoyable hour and a half. We had an employee recognition dinner, or excuse me, lunch, last week down in the Grove, and basically, we just wanted to make sure that, it's kind of the end of the summer, getting ready for the winter, and a good opportunity to get everyone together, all of our employees, and show them how much we appreciate all the hard work they've done. They spend so much time serving the public that a lot of times, they just don't get enough time to sit down and talk to each other and not talk business. So, again, there's a few council members there as well, and it was a very, very nice event, and it wasn't too hot, even though I think it was the hottest day of the year, but down in that Grove, I think they, you know, the firemen, they'll have their little measuring devices, so they said it was fifteen degrees cooler down there than it was outside. So, it was a real nice event. On top of that, August, or excuse me, October tenth is our volunteer and employee recognition night. Please, if you haven't registered, please do so. If you know of a volunteer that isn't aware of it, we've tried to get the word out, we've put a lot of information out and tried to contact everyone, but there's still several that, I don't know if they don't know, they have to RSVP, but please register so we can get a good count and be ready for everyone. So, that's on October tenth, and I'll give you more information about that. The budget process is beginning, and we've issued our packets, and we'll be going through that process over the next two to three to four weeks. And last but not least, the chipper program is ending on Friday, so if you need it, try and call or make a reservation, do something, because after Friday, you're going to have to figure out a way to get rid of it yourself, and Rumpke will accept it, so you may have to cut it up a little bit and tie it up, but Rumpke will take it and put it in the garbage. Finally, following up on the prostate cancer awareness, our police are doing No Shave November. We'll let you know a little bit more about that, but if you see them kind of shaggy-looking, it's because they're showing attention to prostate cancer. A couple of them are also walking or running, I'm not really sure which, and the, probably walking, odd walk, and the prostate cancer awareness event that's being held later on this month. So, anyway, that's about it. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Question for the City Manager. Hearing none, thank you, sir. Next report under others is the Clerk of Council, Ms. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers twenty-two dash twenty-nineteen through twenty-five dash twenty-nineteen and resolution numbers twenty-five dash twenty-nineteen through twenty-nine dash twenty-nineteen were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Clerk of Council? Any questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing none, before we go to new business, I would like to add one thing to just about the parade. For those members of council who are going to participate, right, with the council members, if you have not yet let Sally know, you need to let her know before the close of business tomorrow. If you don't let her know by then, then there will not be a space for you on the fire truck. And as I said before, everybody's responsible for their own goodies. So keep that in mind. If you've not let her know, and you plan to do it, let her know before the close of business tomorrow. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item number nine, new business is their motion. Mr. B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolution numbers thirty dash twenty-nineteen through thirty-two dash twenty-nineteen by title only. These resolutions were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring a reading in full and read resolutions number thirty twenty-nineteen through thirty-two twenty-nineteen by title only. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes seven-zero. First item under new business, item A, resolution number thirty, that's.
I have a question, that we didn't acknowledge that Mr. Burns was here after.
Oh, well, I wasn't really going to do that, but since he is here. Mr. Burns, let the record show that Mr. Burns did come in at eight oh six, and he is now present, meaning that all council members are present. Thank you, Councilwoman Holt, for looking out for Mr. Burns. Item A, resolution number thirty dash twenty-nineteen, would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number thirty dash twenty-nineteen, a resolution consenting to the execution of a redevelopment incentive agreement between Environmental Quality Management, EQM, and the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
Say a motion, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I would move adoption of resolution number thirty dash two thousand nineteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution thirty dash twenty-nineteen. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes. The city's reached an agreement to successfully keep one of our businesses, Environmental Quality Management, in the city. EQM is an environmental engineering firm located in the Carolyn Business Park, and it's nearing the conclusion of its existing lease. Our economic development team met with the company officials earlier this year and put together a mutually beneficial agreement that helps keep this company in Forest Park. EQM will invest more than nine-hundred thousand dollars to extend its lease for another eight years and will improve the thirty-eight-thousand-square-foot building. The project will result in the retention of fifty-three full-time jobs and four part-time jobs, and in addition, EQM will create another eight full-time jobs and one part-time position. In order to make our package competitive, we had to come up with some type of incentive, which the Economic Development Commission has reviewed and recommended. And it would be a one-time development grant of thirty thousand dollars. The company officials have confirmed that this would allow them to stay and expand in our community. And it's important to note that engineering is one of our target industries for our redevelopment program. So I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on thirty dash twenty-nineteen?
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Resolution thirty dash twenty-nineteen passes seven-zero. Next item is item B, resolution thirty-one dash twenty-nineteen. Would clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number thirty-one dash twenty-nineteen, a resolution consenting to the execution of a redevelopment incentive agreement between, between Enriching Spaces and the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of resolution number thirty-one dash twenty-nineteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution thirty-one dash twenty-nineteen. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes. Staff has also reached an agreement to help another key member of our business community stay in Forest Park. Enriching Spaces is a recognized leader in office furniture and interior design industries. It happens also to be one of our original tenants in the Kemper Meadow Business Park. Recently, they experienced a major transition with Dawn Schwartzman taking over sole ownership of the business, and she and her management team explored a number of options, including relocation. But fortunately, we were able to demonstrate that the best possible option for them was to remain in their existing building in Kemper Meadow Business Park. In addition to the purchase price of the building, Enriching Spaces invested a substantial amount to improve the space, to create a first-class office environment for its eleven full-time employees. Another four full-time employees and two part-time positions will be created as a result of this project. In order to help Ms. Schwartzman and her team complete this renovation, staff is recommending a modest five-thousand-dollar redevelopment grant, which will help them with some remaining elements of its renovation. And it is also important to note that the city is glad to maintain its relationship with this very high-profile and top-notch company that has supported us in many of our programs and events over the years. And so I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk, please call the roll on thirty-one twenty-nineteen.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-one dash twenty-nineteen passes seven-zero. Next item is item C, resolution thirty-two twenty-nineteen. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number thirty-two dash twenty-nineteen, a resolution amending the designation of depositories by the, by City Council and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with those depository agencies.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of resolution number thirty-two dash twenty-nineteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution thirty-two dash twenty-nineteen. Is there any discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, this resolution maintains Fifth Third as the city's primary depository. There will be no change in banking services, but it does add Voyager as an eligible credit card processor for fuel purchases and modifies the agreement with Infintech to process not only for Mayor's Court, but also for the tax office, online payments of taxes, when e-filing, and to offer electronic payment options for quarterly estimated tax payments and payments plans maintained by the Income Tax Department. And I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk call the roll on thirty-two twenty-nineteen?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-two dash twenty-nineteen passes seven-zero. Next item on the agenda, item D is a motion, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I would move to receive the General Fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports.
Thank you.
Moving in second to receive the General Fund summary report as contained in the departmental report. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven-zero. Next item is item E, a motion, Councilwoman Holt.
I would like to make a motion to accept the termination of Mr. David Lives from the Stormwater Utility Board for the term expiring eleven-thirty twenty-twenty.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we accept the resignation of David Lives from the Stormwater Utility Board, term expiring eleven-thirty twenty. Any discussion?
None.
I want to note that it's, that he's not terminating, he's resigning.
That's what I said.
And, and I know that David has been involved in the city for many years, and he has had to resign from a number of committees and commissions because he has moved out of the city, and we're sorry to see him go, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven-zero. Any further business to come before the body? Any further business to come before the body? Motion, the meeting is adjourned.